Good afternoon and welcome. Glad to have everyone attend us today for the joint meeting between the Caldwell County Board of Commissioners as well as the Lenore City Council. My name's Mark Transu. I'm not elected official, nor am I a government staff member. I do serve both for the county and the city through the Caldwell County Economic Development Advisory Committee and then the Lenore Business Advisory Board. So with that, I was asked to cover a couple of procedural things prior to the official start of the joint meeting. As you came into the door, on the table there, there are some sign up sheets for anyone who would like to make a public comment. If you had opportunity to sign as you came in, great. If not, if you would move toward the table at this time just to sign up for that. Along those lines, anyone who plans to make a public comment, we just ask that you limit those comments to three minutes. So as people are moving toward the sign up sheets, we'll pause. And yes, and there are two different, two different sign up sheets for the two different individual public hearings. One for the incentive package and one for the Virginia Street closing. So we'll pause while folks have an opportunity to sign up.
Mayor, mayor, there's one back there. There was anyway.
It was major.
Yeah, major back there, yeah.
Anyone else sign up to speak? Seeing no one else at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Caldwell County Commissioner, Board Chair Randy Church to begin the joint meeting.
All right. Thank you, Mark. And I'll call the meeting of the Caldwell County Board of Commissioners to order for this Tuesday, October the 22nd, 2024, for this joint meeting and public hearing between ourselves and the city of Lenore. And so we have a quorum with four commissioners present, myself, Commissioner Donnie Potter, Commissioner Robbie Wilkie, and Commissioner Jeff Branch.
Thank you. And I will call to order the Lenore City Council meeting for this special meeting of the two boards together for Tuesday, October 24th, 2024, to get ready for the public hearings. We have the council, can you hear me? Hold it up. There we go. How about now? Thank you. I'm not used, this is a different chair I'm in. I have mine adjusted over there. But yes, we, the city council is here this evening. We are missing one council member tonight, but the rest of our council board is here. So thank you guys all for being here tonight. So at this point, I will turn it back to Chairman Church to start the public hearing.
All right. So the first order in our public hearing is a statement, and it reads, "As Project Cardinal, consideration of an economic development agreement by and between Caldwell County, City of Lenore, and Tapaha Dynamics LLC for expansion of the Lenore campus. Tapaha Dynamics LLC acknowledges that but for the local government's provision of the economic development grants set forth herein, it would not have agreed to locate Project Cardinal at the site and enter into this agreement. In accordance with the North Carolina General Statute 158-7.1, the Caldwell County Board of Commissioners and the Lenore City Council are currently holding a joint public hearing at the Caldwell County Chambers on this Tuesday, October the 22nd, 2024, at 5:00 PM to consider awarding an economic development incentive to Project Cardinal. The notice of the public hearing was advertised in the Lenore News topic on October the 10th, 2024. And upon the conclusion of the public hearing, the Caldwell County Commission and the Lenore City Council may act on the economic development agreement between Tapaha Dynamics and LLC as submitted." So our first presenter in the public hearing is going to be Ms. Ashley Bowle, our Economic Development Director. So Ms. Bowle.
Mr. Chairman, do you need to open the public hearing?
I do. See, this crowd, we're glad to have y'all here, by the way. But we get a little off kilter ourself because I'm just like you, I'm just a common old country boy from Collinsville, all right? So all these procedures get me a little confused, but I'll declare the public hearing open at this time.
And I will also declare the public hearing open for the city of Lenore, as stated.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners, Mayor, and Council. I'm here today to present Project Cardinal, and this is the largest economic development project and incentive agreement in Caldwell County history. This project not only represents a tremendous opportunity for growth, but also highlights the strengths of our partnerships with both the private sector and local governments. Make sure our technology keeps up with us here. Project Cardinal brings a commitment to meet or exceed $600 million in site improvements and equipment investment within five years of this agreement's being executed. In addition to the capital investment, the project will create at least 30 full-time jobs that pay at or above the county's average private sector wage of $49,333 annually, further boosting the local economy. This agreement outlines tax grants that include 50% real property tax and 85% of personal property tax on the new project. Both the city of Lenore and Caldwell County are partnering in providing these incentives. These grants will be provided annually for a 20-year term. If not for these grants, the company would not agree to locate the project at the site here in Caldwell County. It's important to note that these incentives align with regional standards mirroring agreements like those in nearby counties. Additionally, this is a performance-based grant, meaning that no one's paid until after the performance goals are met. This project expands its, I'm sorry, this project expansion is set to bring substantial economic benefits, generating a significant increase in property tax revenues annually for both the city and the county, even after accounting for the grants. Additionally, the current assessed tax value of the parcels involved is just $277,300. But upon completion, this expansion will elevate the tax value, making Project Cardinal the largest taxpayer in both the city and the county, even after incentive grants are Beyond the immediate economic benefits, Project Cardinal will help diversify and stabilize tax base, reducing reliance on any single industry. This increased revenue will support vital public services at no added cost to our taxpayers, effectively reducing the tax burden of citizens while providing much-needed funds for infrastructure, education, and public safety. I'd also like to emphasize that the company behind Project Cardinal has been a great corporate citizen for over 15 years. They've shown a consistent commitment to supporting local nonprofits, educational initiatives, and community events. Their presence had has, excuse me, has had a very limited demand on county and city services, and they continue to demonstrate their dedication to being a responsible and engaged member of our community. I'd like to invite a representative from Project Cardinal to the podium to share a few remarks.
Thank you for the time. I appreciate it. I'd like to say that, you know, Project Cardinal has been proud to call Caldwell County home for many years, being one of the first data center campuses in the, in the United States. So glad to be able to have an opportunity to provide some public comment during this time. My name's Brad Hefner. I've been a citizen of Caldwell County for 20, almost 23 years, and then.
Sorry.
How's that? There we go.
Yeah, get up on that.
Get up on that. Okay, I'm up on there. My name's Brad Hefner, and I've, I've lived in Caldwell County almost 23 years. I've been associated with Project Cardinal for over 12 years and currently seven years as being a manager there. So just to kind of give a little background on what a data center is, it's basically the engine of the digital services that, that are provided, used by people around the world, things such as maps, search, even working on ongoing AI initiatives. All of these are powered by data centers. Since 2007, Project Cardinal's had $1.2 billion worth of investment in Lenore. Looking across other aspects of that, since 2006, there's been an award of over $19 million in North Carolina for organizations and nonprofits. And specifically, since 2010, almost $3 million worth of investment and honestly, donation and, and giving to, to the community for both educational institutions and nonprofits. Some of them, you probably know, Caldwell County Schools, CCCTI, we've got Helping Hands, and many others. So folks that work at the data center, we have data center technicians, we have electricians, civil engineers, security personnel, HVAC, and many, many support staff. And it takes all those folks to, to keep that up and going. Also want to call out that, you know, it's not just hiring, it's, it's providing workforce development for, for that level of, of work. So, you know, we're investing in that piece. And then also, you know, the, the folks there are part of the community and they're giving back, volunteering hours within the local community, sitting on local boards, and then just being citizens of Lenore. So I appreciate the time that you've given me to stand up and, and give you a little bit of background on who I am and where we're at.
All right. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
So wrapping it up, I'd like to remind our elected officials that as allowed under North Carolina General Statute 158-7.1, counties and municipalities are authorized to make expenditures for economic development purposes when it benefits the local population, taxable property, and business prospects. This agreement falls squarely within those guidelines, and it reflects our shared goal of making Caldwell County a competitive location for major investments. In conclusion, Project Cardinal represents a generational opportunity for our county. With the creation of new high-paying jobs, increased tax revenues, and the diversification of our economy, this project will have a lasting positive impact on Caldwell County. I respectfully ask for your support in approving this incentive agreement as it ensures a brighter future for our community. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ashley. I think the list is coming forward for the public who have signed up to speak to this economic development incentive. Thank you, Abby. You know, they still can't hear me in the back, they say. All right. I thought my voice carried better than that. So at this time, we're going to enter into the public comment portion of our meeting. This is where you've, each one signed up, and you're allowed to come up and speak in, in what you would like for both the Lenore City Council and the commissioners to hear in reference to the incentive itself. We won't answer any questions. You can look at this kind of like a court of law. You're coming up to give testimony during this time in which we get to hear what you have to say. And so we appreciate each one who has signed up. So the first one on the list is Lynette Ramsey. I will say as you come, Ms. Ramsey, let us know your address, and that'll, that'll help us a lot knowing who, who's here this evening, so.
Okay, thank you. My address is 5140 JM Crag Road, Granite Falls.
All right. Thank you.
So good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Mayor Gibbons, City Council members and commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to voice my opinions on the matter of incentive package and Google expansion. Oftentimes, I come and stand at this podium and complain. That's not what I'm doing today. I want to say thank you that you're looking toward growth and expansion for the county. I could, I found out about this a few, a few days ago because I saw some misinformation on Facebook, and I wanted to clarify some things that as a citizen I learned. So here's some numbers that I got over the last couple weeks. Google pays over $650,000 to just the county taxes. They employ over 400 people. Google is the fourth-largest taxpayer right now, and I heard Ashley talk about they're going to become the number one, as they have been in the past. This would make them, this would add another $500,000 to our county as income, just in the county. So that $650,000 that they give the county, I did some research, and I looked at the budget. So we spend about $560,000 to fight the opioid epidemic here in Caldwell County. We spend over $200,000 to, for the E911 program. The money that Google has given us allows us to have some vital programs that if we did not have Google, we would have to find that income from somewhere else. So it would also increase our personal tax, I mean, we'd have to find that income, so our taxes would increase. When I looked at the math, and over $1.2 million is what they bring in tax dollars to our county, I'm just thankful that they're here. I noticed on the city side that your sanitation bu, our sanitation budget is about $1.1 million. So the $550,000 that Google pays to the city pays for about half of that sanitation budget. So without Google, what would we do? I could talk about a whole lot of other things, but I just want to say the amount of that tax check that they write is just the beginning of what we need, and I strongly support, vote in favor of the expansion of Google so that we can reap the rewards of growth. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Ramsey. Next on the list is Dr. Mark Porch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Mayor, City Council members. It's great to be with you and have the opportunity to bring comments on behalf of Caldwell Community College and Technical Institute. Hopefully, people can hear me. I can't really hear myself. Google has been a great partner with the college and education in general, going back to 2007. And I would like to highlight just a few of their contributions to the education community. In 2007, CCC and TI partnered with Google to establish the college's first IT institute when we sent a team to Mountain View, California, and worked with Google, the Google leadership team, to develop a tailored workforce program called the IT Institute that not only prepared students for jobs at Google, but in the IT industry in general. That program is still active today in preparing students for jobs here in our community. And when COVID hit in 2020, Google was the first company I contacted for help. We knew that we had to move classes online and that many students would not have the technology to continue their courses. Google was quick to respond with not one, but two generous donations of Chromebooks that allowed students to continue their coursework remotely. In addition to the laptops, Google partnered with county leadership and Caldwell County Schools during COVID to expand broadband access through mobile hotspots. When we were trying to figure out just how we could allow students to continue their courses remotely, we knew that many in our community did not have the internet and did not have access, and that was going to present a major challenge to them completing their coursework. Google was able to equip school buses with Wi-Fi, and those buses were deployed across the county and parked in remote locations so that students and the public could access the internet and students could continue their courses. Google has been a major supporter of various programs at the college, including Camp Enterprise, which is an entrepreneurship program in partnership with the town of Hudson, Caldwell County Schools, and the Impact Rotary Club. They've helped develop video conferencing classrooms in all of our traditional high schools, which allows us to deliver coursework from the college to South Caldwell, High Brighton, and West Caldwell High Schools, eliminating the need for students to leave their home high school and they're able to get free college classes there at those respective schools. These are just a few examples of how Google has been a great community partner and a great partner with education. And of, on behalf of CCC and TI and students throughout our county, I say thank you, and we look forward to continuing that relationship in the future. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Porch. Next, we have Jerry Church. And I'll say as Jerry's coming, if you would, please silence all your devices. We've had a couple of those go off, and I know if I'm speaking and that happens, it kind of throws me off a little bit. So if you would, just silence your devices, please. So Jerry, give us your address.
Okay. Nine Morningside Drive, Granite Falls, North Carolina. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, the Commissioners, and the City Council for allowing me to speak this evening. $600 million, that's quite an investment and quite, it was a lot of work for many years. The benefit of that investment is going to be tax dollars to the county, much-needed tax dollars. Think about how many times a $600 million opportunity comes along for Caldwell County and for the city of Lenore. There's several things that the county's facing in the near future that's going to require some capital investment, courthouse project coming up, Caldwell Community College, I chair that board, we have a new health sciences building, and it's going to come online in a couple of years. And part of the, the role of the county commissioners is to provide for the maintenance of that building and for some expenses for utilities. That building is going to provide a lot of nurses for this community, much-needed nurses. I've gotten to the age now where I'm very concerned about a nurse shortage. I need them more often than I'd like to. And also, thank you all for silencing your phones because every time somebody's phone rings, I grab mine, even though it's not my ring. But anyway, thank you for, for allowing me to speak this evening, and I would highly recommend that that incentive for be passed this evening. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Church. Next, we have Brian Moore, our Caldwell County Economic, I'm sorry, Chamber President. So welcome, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Council members, thank you, and distinguished guests. I'm here to talk today a little bit about corporate citizenship, and I look around this room, and there's multiple people that are great corporate citizens and individual citizens for our community. I'd like to just represent a couple, I am no David Letterman, but a top 10 list, per se, of the things that Google has done to help support our community in a number of different ways. As Dr. Porch had mentioned, at the early stages of COVID, we had a number of businesses that were struggling because there was no relief available. And after sending out some information to some community leaders on a Sunday morning, Google responded. We're thankful for their help to help us in our local economy for our small business owners. Google, just a few weeks ago, was one of the first companies to call me directly and say, "We're here to support small businesses in Caldwell County in help from Hurricane Helene." Google stepped in to assist the Caldwell Senior Center at my request because at the beginning of COVID, there were seniors that did not have access to Wi-Fi, and in that building, they did not have a very good system at all to support any type of Wi-Fi or connectivity for citizens. Not only did Google step forward and come assist the Caldwell Senior Center, but they also provided free laptops and support for those seniors to be able to stay online, learn, and grow new skills. They have invested thousands of dollars in Wi-Fi in our school buses for rolling study halls. They have invested in STEM by offering and supporting the Gravity Games. They have offered multiple training classes each week with a Grow with Google platform. We are so grateful to provide that as a service to all of our small businesses, even if they're in business for a long period of time or they're just getting started. Google is there to help support our local small businesses. They have been a major supporter of the Caldwell Chamber and many nonprofit agencies, many that I can't even probably recommend, all of the nonprofits that they've been able to support. They are caring individuals who donate their time to not only chamber programs, initiatives, and events, but serve as Board of Director members for the Chamber of Commerce and many other board seats and commissioner and council seats that are available, I'm sorry, committee seats that are available in our community. Every business member of Caldwell County Chamber of Commerce has an enhanced Google Business Directory listing. So when you go to the Caldwell Chamber of Commerce website and you type in your business on a Google platform, you're going to get an elevated enhanced business listing. It's a great service that helps support our chamber and our businesses. And Google has created a great Google Leadership Series of Events for local businesses to learn, grow, and connect. The Caldwell Chamber of Commerce is grateful to be here. I live in Lenore at 208 High Brighton Avenue, and I'm very glad to be here and to support this process in recommendation as been set forth. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Brian. Next, we have Bill Slagel.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Bill Slagel. I work for the Economic Development Partnership in North Carolina, and over the past 10 years, it's been my good fortune to work with much of the leadership in Caldwell County and many of the municipalities that make up the county. We've done multiple projects throughout the year, Mr. Chairman, if, if you recall some of those things I could call your attention to. But data centers are here to stay, and just as important as water and sewer is to our infrastructure today, the ability to communicate via the internet is just as important. And in 2007, when Caldwell County stepped out to host Google for the first time, it set a trend for western North Carolina. Since that time, we have seen the likes of Facebook, Apple, Microsoft, and all of those supply chain companies come forth to be a part of this region. And Caldwell County had a large emphasis in being that first to the table, so to speak. And as a result of that, we've seen billions of dollars invested into these various communities and the region itself, along with thousands of jobs created. So from the Economic Development Partnership, we strongly support this project and hope you all the success in the days to come. And again, thank you for the opportunity to speak. And as someone that's been a victim of the hurricane recently, we've seen the, the importance of being able to communicate with our neighbors and our community. And I got introduced to Starlink last week, and thank heaven for it, because when you can talk to your family or your friends, or if you're concerned about your neighbors, knowing that they're safe, that they're in a good position makes all the difference in the world. And we saw with that advanced technology next week, because I live in Mitchell County and in Sprucevine, and it's, it's been a tough, tough situation, still is, and it's going to be for a long time. But because we could talk to our neighbors, check on our church members and things like that, we can at least lay down at night and know that they're all safe. So thank you very much for this opportunity.
Yes, sir. Thank you for being here this evening. And next is Dr. Phillips, Dr. Don Phillips. Our Caldwell County Board of Education Superintendent. Our Caldwell County Board of Education Superintendent.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Mr. Mayor, and City Council Members. I am Don Phipps, Superintendent of the Caldwell County Schools. I reside at 406 Woodridge Drive in Lenore. I would like to thank you for allowing me a few moments to speak. I promise my comments will be general and brief. I wanted to speak to the value-added benefit for the school system's various partnerships with Google. Simply put, it's very significant. From monetary support of projects, programs, and initiatives, to technical support, planning meetings, various committees, teams, and task forces, the benefit has been great for our school system and we hope for Google. There is no question that we would not have been able to accomplish several things as a system without Google's involvement and support. Selfishly moving forward, we hope to have a deeper and broader relationship with them. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak, and I ask that you support this incentive.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Phipps.
Good evening. My name's Hannah Morrison, and I'm here representing United Way of Caldwell County. This is a letter from our Executive Director. Dear Chairman Church and Mayor Gibbons, I am writing to express my strong support for Google and their extraordinary contributions to Caldwell County. Since joining our community, Google has been a vital partner to the United Way and numerous nonprofits, making a lasting difference in the lives of countless residents. Their early support was instrumental in launching NC 211 in Caldwell County, a critical service that connects residents with essential health and human services. With nearly $200,000 in continued financial backing, Google has sustained NC 211 for our citizens to have access to this resource. In times of crisis, Google consistently steps up. During the COVID-19 pandemic, they provided essential funding to help our community navigate the challenges we faced. Most recently, following Hurricane Helene, Google made a significant impact by contributing three truckloads of supplies and donating $50,000 to our relief efforts. This generous support allowed us to provide essential gift cards to Caldwell County families, helping them secure food and other necessities during a difficult time. In addition to their financial contributions, Google has been an active volunteer partner, particularly in our Weekend Food Backpack Program, where their team has helped pack meals for children in local schools. They've also shared their time and technological expertise to modernize our operations, enhancing both our efficiency and impact. Google's commitment extends to many other nonprofits in Caldwell County, empowering organizations to serve the community more effectively. Their contributions, financial, volunteer-based, and technological, have been transformative. I encourage the county commission and city council to continue supporting Google's presence in Caldwell County and the city of Lenore. Their dedication has strengthened our community, and their ongoing partnership will undoubtedly lead to even greater positive outcomes. Thank you for your consideration. Jamie Willis, Executive Director, United Way of Caldwell County.
All right. Thank you. Next is Keith Heinmann. I think I heard you on the radio this morning.
I guess so. Get his autograph.
All right. Good evening, Chairman Church, County Commissioners, Mayor Gibbons, guest, City Council Members, and distinguished guests. I'm honored to stand before you today to express our heartfelt gratitude to Google for their unwavering support of communities and schools of Caldwell County. Their generous contributions have made a profound impact on our mission to empower students and provide them with the resources they need to succeed. With their support, we've been able to implement vital programs that address the unique challenges our students face, ensuring they have access to essential educational tools, mentorship, and a safe environment to learn and grow. Their commitment to not only enhances our ability to foster academic achievement, but also strengthens the community as a whole. Together, we're making a difference in the lives of countless young people, helping them overcome obstacles and their families so that they can reach their full potential. Thank you, Google, for believing in our vision and for being an integral partner in our efforts to create a brighter future for the students of Caldwell County Schools. Your support truly makes a difference, and we're immensely grateful. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Heinmann. Next is Dr. David Lowery. Welcome, Dr. Lowery.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Chairman Church. Good close. County Commissioners and Mayor Gibbons and City Council Members. On behalf of UNC Health and UNC Health Caldwell, I give very enthusiastic support to Project Cardinal and to expansion of Google. One of my primary objectives in my tenure as President and CEO at UNC Health Caldwell is to, has been to expand our resources, and we've been growing aggressively. Just in the past few months, we've added critical care specialists. We're going to be adding an outpatient neurologist in a few months, a joint replacement specialist, and just yesterday, we signed another gastroenterologist. I'm excited about this because I am so tired of hearing of people traveling to Winston or Charlotte or the Triangle to get the medical care that they need. I want our folks to stay right here and get high-quality care close to home. With that being said, if I were in the NBA, which I'm not, but if I were a little taller, a little faster, and a lot younger, I would want to play on LeBron James' team. If I were in the NFL, I'd probably want to play with Patrick Mahomes, because people want to be with a winner. They want to be associated with a winner. And when I look at our medical staff, six years ago, there were 120 physicians and advanced practice providers on our medical staff. Currently, there are almost 500. Some of those are virtual providers, but many of them are individuals who've relocated to this area, and why? They've been attracted to what they see. Of course, we live in a beautiful area. Who couldn't love the beauty that we're surrounded by? But when these people hear the word "Google," the name "Google," that resonates with them because they know that they're going to be affiliated and associated with a winning team, with a winner. So Google has enhanced our efforts to recruit very talented physicians and other providers. We've already heard countless stories of their benefit to the community, which I entirely endorse, endorse. But just from my viewpoint of being associated with a winning team and enhancing my goal to provide outstanding care for those in our community, I support this fully and without reservation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Lowery. Our final person who has signed up is Bob Floyd, Mayor of Cedar Rock. Welcome, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mayor Gibbons, and Council Members. I'm here to thank you and express my appreciation for your leadership and your foresight to bring this project to this point. I've worked, lived in Caldwell County all of my life, mostly all my life, and have worked in a lot of organizations that are there to improve the quality of life for people. And sometimes when I look at broad review and see that there are Caldwell County's resources compared to a Mecklenburg or a Wake County, we can't do everything we want to do sometimes. And that's generally because we have a lower tax base, we have lower tax revenue, we do all we can. This project will make such a difference in what we're going to be able to do, not just for everybody in this room in the short term, but this is going to be a game changer for our children and grandchildren, for us to be able to provide more support to our schools and all of the other things that really, really make the quality of life in Caldwell County what it needs to be. So thank you and appreciate, and want to just give you my support for this project. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. All right. A late arrival, I see, but no less, we'll entertain Mr. Michael Deneen.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm sorry, I signed up on the wrong paper.
Yes, sir. It's okay.
But I'm here, I live at 1504 Windsor Street, and I work at Lenore Housing Authority at 431 Vance Street, representing 158 units in Lenore with 350 residents all housed in there, most of them making under $18,000 a year. Google has been instrumental with us and partnering with us and providing money for laptops and Wi-Fi centers for our residents, and it allows us to provide nutrition services for them weekly. Google has partnered with us in 2020, or 2021, excuse me, and provided us with a grant totaling $50,000, allowing us to buy 20, excuse me, 20 laptops and assisting us with providing services for our residents. So I greatly support Google in this venture. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir, for being here. All right. Having no one else signed up for this portion of the public hearing, I will declare the public hearing closed. And with that, I will ask our Board of Commissioners to consider action in adopting this evening's recommendation by the staff to approve this economic development agreement between Caldwell County, City Lenore, Tapaha Dynamics. So I hear a motion that we approve this, this evening.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the incentive agreement to Google.
All right. Anybody got any?
Project Cardinal.
Project Cardinal. All right. Any discussion or comment from the Commissioners? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. So Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. All right. We, the public hearing is open. Anybody on the City Council have anything they would like to say to this before we close it? All right. I will close the public hearing then for the city Lenore portion of this, and I will turn it over to the Council for any action on motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the incentive package for Project Cardinal as presented.
Thank you. I have a motion from Councilmember Bill that we approve the Project Cardinal Economic Development Agreement as presented. No other questions for it? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. We certainly appreciate that. Okay. Then we'll move on to the, to our next public hearing. This is a public hearing, the consideration of a resolution ordering the closing of a portion of Virginia Street between 8:15 and 10:21 Virginia Street. In accordance with the North Carolina General Statute 168 Act 299, the City, Lenore City Council will hold this public hearing at the City-City Chambers on Tuesday, October 22nd, 2024, at 5:00. The resolution of intent was advertised for four consecutive weeks in the Lenore News Topic. On the following date, September 24th and October 1st, October 8th, October 15th, 2024, for the street closure. Letters were sent by registered or certified mail to all owners of property adjoining the street as shown on the county tax records, advising them of the day, the time, and the place of the meeting, and the city staff prominently posted notices along the street. Upon the conclusion of the public hearing, City Council may act on the resolution ordering the closing of a portion of Virginia Street from 8:15 Virginia Street to 10:21 Virginia Street. All right. I will open the public hearing, and we do have some list of those who have asked to speak. Before we get to that, I would like to recognize our city Lenore Planning Director, Ms. Hannah Williams, for some information.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Commissioners and Council as well. I appreciate your attention to this issue. All righty. So.
Hannah, can you pull that closer to you?
Yeah. It feels like it's right in front of your face, but you just got to pull it even closer.
It's not touching your teeth.
So today, we're talking about the closure of Virginia Street segment. It's right between Morganton Boulevard and Fairview Drive. So here is the latest plat proposed by the applicant, Tapaha Dynamics. They proposed to close Virginia Street in the area where they own both sides of the street. So this is different from the original exhibit shown on September 17th, when Council passed the resolution of intent to close. It showed the southern terminus at 1021 Virginia Street, but now it's closer to 1005C Virginia Street. And this is a bit easier to read, this map is. It shows ownership along all sides of the section of Virginia Street. So in blue is property owned by Tapaha Dynamics. Green is property owned by Duke Energy, and red is other private ownership. The purple line in the center there, that is the segment to be closed. Both Tapaha Dynamics and Duke Energy have no objections to the road closure. Tapaha Dynamics is the project applicant, of course, and Duke Energy has provided the city of Lenore with a letter of support, which I have submitted for the public record. This slide just describes the procedure to close a public street. We have the resolution of intent to close. It was passed by a city council on September 17th, and the signs, submit, excuse me, the signed resolution is submitted for the record. Signs were posted, excuse me, signs were posted at two locations along the corridor on September 23rd, and then they were checked on October 3rd, following Hurricane Helene. Staff sent letters by certified mail to property owners along the corridor. By law, only abutting owners need to be notified, abutting the closure, but staff sent letters to owners all along the corridor from Morganton Boulevard to Fairview Drive. We advertised the closure in the Lenore News Topic on the dates listed that Mayor Gibbons also discussed earlier, and we scheduled this public hearing for tonight. And then tonight, following the public hearing, the City Council will vote on whether to close this segment. So we do have some relevant history about Virginia Street here. It was maintained by the state until 2015. Lenore acquired the street for maintenance in April of 2015, or requested to take over maintenance in April of 2015 in anticipation, excuse me, anticipation of economic development expansions. And that is the resolution that City Council passed. And NC DOT agreed and abandoned this segment in May of 2015. And we also have the abandonment report here, and let's see, we also have the Lenore Code of Ordinances that describes the procedure for acceptance of streets that were previously maintained by, by the state, and it's through passing that resolution. So these documents are already in the public record. So staff has contacted all emergency and public services directors in Lenore and Caldwell County, and none of them saw any adverse impacts on city or county public and emergency services from the closure of the segment. We've heard from Public Utilities over water and sewer, Public Works, Lenore Fire, Lenore Police, Caldwell EMS, and Caldwell County Schools, as well as the Transportation Director of the Greater Hickory MPO. And no adverse impacts are anticipated from closing this segment of Virginia Street. Public Utilities will have general access easement to the closure area to maintain existing infrastructure. Public Works, Lenore Fire, Lenore Police, EMS, they, they don't see any service impacts resulting from this closure. Caldwell County Schools has stated that no students are picked up on Virginia Streets. There are no residences there, and bus routes can be rerouted around the closure. And I've received written statements from each of these entities in writing, and I submit them for the public record. No property owners on Virginia Street are losing access to their property, and any kind of route changes can be accommodated on other streets. We have Fairview Drive primarily. There's also ways around the closure through Overlook Drive and Harrisburg Drive. There's also ways around the closure through Overlook Drive and Harrisburg Drive, as well as through Southwest Boulevard. Here I have a, one of the maps resulting from the travel demand model provided by the Greater Hickory, MPO, and this map kind of analyzes volumes and capacities. All of the streets that we, that I just mentioned are under capacity. So they're, they're just, there isn't a specific call out on the number of trips on Virginia Street, Fairview Drive, or Southwest Boulevard, but every street in gray is under capacity. So that's quite a few, and they, they're just not anticipated to even near capacity in several decades. And we, our Transportation Authority, the MPO, they keep an eye on these things decades in advance. Next, I have NCDOT's annual average daily trips for Virginia Street on this segment in particular between Morganton Boulevard and Fairview Drive. And in 2023, the last available data was 1,948. We also had Lenore Police Department place a loop counter on Virginia Street in August 2024, and they counted 10,000 trips in five days, and that averages out to 2,000 trips a day. So here, we can kind of take a look at where this displaced traffic will go. There are several alternative routes around there, like I've already said, but here is, you know, simple comparison, what it's like to get from Dula Town Road to downtown Lenore through Virginia Street, and it is about four and a half miles. If you rerouted those trips through Fairview Drive, due to this closure, you're adding three tenths of a mile to that, to get to downtown Lenore. Similarly, from the southwest side off Dula Town Road to Blowing Rock Boulevard to, say, get to Walmart, through Virginia Street now onto 18, it's 5.9 miles. And then if you rerouted that traffic onto Fairview Drive, it still only adds three tenths of a mile. Okay, so Virginia Street Bridge was inspected this year in May 2024. It received a sufficiency rating of 99.55, and that's out of 100. And there is a 54-page structure safety report accompanying that rating that analyzes the conditions of the materials, the structure, age, service, and loads, and so it's in very good condition. So if those property owners were to use this bridge, it's in great condition. We also had a second opinion by Engineers Mattern and Craig, and that was completed following Hurricane Helene on October 16, and they issued a letter of concurrence with the DOT May 2024 report, and I submit that letter from Mattern and Craig Engineers for the record. Those engineers are also in the audience tonight, if you would like to hear from them Again, just to talk a little bit more about impacts from Hurricane Helene in Lenore, there is a USGS stream flow monitoring gauge on Lower Creek, which is the creek that goes below Virginia Street Bridge. This gauge is Mulberry Street Bridge, close to Mulberry Recreation Center. It's a mile and a change above, you know, our subject area, but Hurricane Helene precipitation, the stream came, excuse me, the stream elevation came within a foot and a half of the record. It did not breach that record. Let's see. Also regarding Hurricane Helene, I just want to compare how much rain we've received to our annual rainfall. So average annual rainfall in Lenore is 48 inches. In the four-day span, three days prior to Helene and then the day of Hurricane Helene, Lenore received about 10 inches of precipitation. So we received about 20% of our annual rainfall in a four-day span, and the bridge was still not impacted. It's still in very good condition. And these figures came from the National Weather Service of Greenville and Spartanburg. We're aware that properties north and south, excuse me, north, we're aware that properties north and south of the closure will now have one point of ingress and egress from their property, and we just want to point out that this is not a unique circumstance in Lenore or statewide. Here is a list of several properties that have one point of access. So first one off, Lenore Water Plant, and as well as our two wastewater treatment plants, the Lenore Aquatic Center, they all have one point of access. And there are other industrial parks, businesses, and residential neighborhoods that have that one point of ingress and egress. So it's just not a unique circumstance. In addition, Tapaha Dynamics has agreed and will grant a temporary emergency access easement separate from the street closure. So that means should the Virginia Street Bridge become impassable, and the city or county issues a state of emergency, Tapaha will work with the City of Lenore to assist owners to have, gain, or maintain access to their properties during the state of emergency. So the properties that they promised to grant access to are listed on the slide, and I'll read them for the record. 723A Virginia Street, 723B Virginia Street, 723 Virginia Street, as well as 781, 785 Virginia Street, and 714 Virginia Street. So in closing, staff's proposed findings regarding the closure of Virginia Street are as follows. The abandonment of the street will in no way degrade the efficiency of the provision of any city service, including but not limited to garbage collection, fire and police protection, access to emergency medical services, delivery of both water and sewer services, or school bus routes. And the closing of the public right-of-way is not contrary to the public interest, and no individual owning property abutting or in the vicinity of the street will, as a result of the abandonment, be deprived of reasonable means of ingress and egress to their property. So that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions that you might have for me.
Thank you, Hannah. At this time, does anyone would like to ask a question concerning that? Commission, Council? Okay. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Okay, we do have several people that have signed up that would like to speak concerning the Virginia Street closure. We'll start that list. Jerry Church, you are listed first. Mr. Church, glad to. Always have you here.
Thank you, and thank you again for letting me address this esteemed group tonight. I want to talk a little bit about, sometimes there's offsets, there's good things that comes with bad things. They come hand in hand together. Not necessarily a tragedy to close Virginia Street, but it's part of the bigger plan, which benefits the citizens of Caldwell County. The tax dollars, we have 82,000 citizens in Caldwell County, we have 18,000 in Lenore. They'll benefit from this project greatly. There's, there's a, change is hard. We all have our routines. We all go the same direction to the same place, the same way, every day, and there's more than one way to get there in normal circumstances, and there appears to be more than one way to get there now. I don't live in the area. I live in Granite Falls, but I have some experience with this. In my 15 years that I served as manager there, we closed the street, we put in a roundabout, and we put in a four-way stop where there was a stoplight, and it was difficult for people to get used to those three things, but time has passed, and it doesn't even, didn't even come up in my last few years as manager there. This is, this is an important project for a number of different reasons for Caldwell County, and I would encourage you to approve closing this portion of Virginia Street. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on then. The next one on the list is Mr. Max Presswood. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate the privilege to be able to speak. My heart, I appreciate you allowing me to be here. But I've got questions, and you already told me I wasn't gonna get no answers, if you're not answering questions. My big concern is really, I've got tractor and trailers moving heavy equipment. A lot of trucks used to use Virginia Street going to the complex and to the other businesses down that street. Of course, they can go by the loop and go other ways now, but I'm in there. I'm on Fairview Drive, 1231A Fairview Drive, Southwest Lenore, and I come out. We use Virginia Street a lot, moving equipment. I can go straight across and stay on Fairview Drive, or I can go left and go out Virginia Street, but the light poles on the Virginia Street are right against the road. We're over width, 12 foot wide, and we go out the middle of the road. Tree limbs are hanging out. Tree limbs need to be cut back, but when he meets traffic going that way, they have to stop or pull off the road for us to get to the loop. Same thing on Fairview Drive. It's not near wide enough going down to, to the Far Value or down to 18 that way. And my question is, in the intersection, that's a bad intersection, any direction you want to go, it's a bad intersection because you're coming off a hill. It's offset, nothing lines up straight. I've heard nothing about what kind of upgrades there are going to be if you close the road. If you close the road, I want to know what are you going to do to make it accessible for tractor and trailer? I mean, you can pass with cars, but it's not accessible, it's not good with a tractor and trailer with heavy equipment. If you're coming up Fairview Drive from the Far Value, it's impossible to turn right onto Virginia Street unless you go all the way over in the old grocery store parking lot, and you'll still probably run through Mike McCoy's yard, and I wouldn't want to do that. But we're going straight through most of the time, and I just want to know what kind of upgrades, you know? That's my question. What are you going to do if you close the road? There got to be some more upgrades. I don't know if there's room there, or how you would do it if you done a roundabout, or I understood a four-way stop, but the stop signs would be knocked down with tractor and trailers going through there. So that's the questions I've got, and I think that's something to consider and think about, what kind of upgrades you're going to do to them roads. Thank you. Appreciate the privilege.
Thank you, sir. All right. Next on our list is Donna Barlow.
I don't have enough to these for all of you, but I want to pass them around. My name is Donna Kent Barlow. I live at 2277 Kentview Lane in Lenore. It is off of Miller Hill Road, which runs into Virginia Street. I have lived in Lenore since I was nine years old. 1968, we moved here, and I can't begin to tell you how many times we've used Virginia Street, both with my parents and now as a grandmother. It is, it's a shorter route for us. Yes, there are other routes we can take. Jerry? Thank you. Yeah, I can adapt to change, but I question why the need to close it. My brother, Robert Kent, he couldn't be here today, he's out of town, but he wrote this and wanted me to read it on his behalf. He says, "I would like to start by saying I am not against the Cardinal Project," which I am not either. "The project will be good for our city and county. A $600 million investment is a huge amount that will go a long way in helping hold down the taxes for our county and city. I am, however, against the closing of the Virginia Street. I do not understand the need to close the street and question, have all of the options been looked at to keep the street open? For me personally, it is a shorter distance and a safer street than the other roads I would be forced to take. I also know this street closing is most likely a done deal. But before the Council votes or the Commissioners to close this street, I would like to see these four things committed to by the Project C, Project Cardinal. There may be more of the Miller Hill area and Dula Town community Cs in this, but these are the four that I see. You need to fix the intersection at Fairview Drive and Virginia Street, as Max said. You cannot make a right turn off of Fairview Drive onto Virginia Street without going into the oncoming traffic lanes." That's like he was talking about going through the old grocery store parking lot. If you try to cut too short, you go off in the hole in front of Mike McCoy's house. It's happened many times. Add another left turning lane to the Morganton Boulevard in the southwest loop, because traffic already backs up there, sometimes waiting two light cycles before you can make a turn. What will the additional 1,000 cars that will have to go that way daily cause as far as a backup on that loop? Also, take care of the business owners. Property owners that will be affected by lower vehicles passing every day, and I'm not talking about residential, but business owners that will lose value to their property immediately when you close the street. Number four, closing of this road will add one mile of travel daily for each trip I take to Lenore. It's not a big deal, but it's added travel via the loop, or six tenths of a mile if I take Fairview Drive. I know that does not sound like much, but that's times by 2,000 vehicles, and that adds up to 50,000 a year for these vehicles. I am not asking for these drivers to be made whole, but I do feel the Cardinal Project should give to the City of Lenore $5 million to be used for projects such as revitalizing the Mulberry Rec Center. Upgrade it, or tying the Greenway together across Morganton Boulevard. Things that we've heard are in process, but haven't seen it. The Cardinal Project asks for 50% rebate on taxes for 20 years. Why can't the citizens of the Miller Hill area and Dula Town ask for compensation for the road closing and the additional burden and expense put on each of these longtime taxpaying families? And in closing, Project Cardinal, which I think is Google, who made a profit of $174 billion in 2023. I'm glad Google has chosen our community to invest in and provide gravity games, internet to downtown Lenore, internet to Martin Luther King Center, and many other things that they do. I do want to acknowledge that, and I say thank you. Closing Virginia Street is putting a burden on the Miller Hill area and Dula Town community. Google should commit to at least the four suggestions and maybe more. I still don't like the street being closed, but at least me, my children, my family, friends will have a safer drive to Lenore, and we can see our community grow and be a place where we are proud to call home. Before you, the City Council Commissioners, cast your votes, let's put this road closing on hold, and look, these four things listed to become a better win-win agreement for Google, the City of Lenore, the Caldwell County, and longtime taxpayer citizens that are directly being impacted. That's from Robert Kent. He lives at 2281 Kentview Lane, Lenore. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next on our list is Mr. Randy Teskell. If I said that right, I hope.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Randy Teskell. I live at 613 Ritchie Road, Taylorsville. I own property on Miller Hill Road. My concerns, a lot of them were already voiced to you, like the improvement of Fairview Road intersection. Road intersection. And also, it doesn't seem like a lot, but three tenths of a mile difference going Fairview Road times 2,000 cars a day is like 600 extra miles, which equates to about 500 metric tons of CO2. The things that Google is very good at communicating and building things, I think they can find a way to communicate across the street. There's multiple companies in Lenore that have factories on both sides of the street and don't impact the traveling public. The other issue is those extra 2,000 cars are going to be coming out Fairview, and is that light able to handle that extra traffic? Could an extra right turn lane be at it there or something like that? I noticed that you studied the Virginia Street Bridge, but that's going to be cut off. We need to study the Fairview Bridge and make sure that's in good shape because that's where the extra traffic is going to be going. The Dula Town community and the other residents out there, it's only an extra minute to go the other way, but in a life-saving emergency, an extra minute for a fire truck to get there to make an extra turn and stuff can mean the matter of life and death. And then an extra minute back to the hospital because you can't go back out Virginia Street. I just think that there, I don't know their plans. I don't know if they're placing a building across that area, but there ought to be a way to keep the street open. They could put a tunnel over or under to get their communications across the street. That's kind of what I was thinking is my concerns. And the other thing is there's factories out there, like the meatpacking place and the chemical plant, which had an emergency a while back. And a lot of large trucks, like Presswood said, would be trapped in there because they can't make that maneuver. If something happened on the loop, or if they missed the ramp on the loop, then they would be stuck in there. And we just need to look for other alternatives. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Hi. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to voice our opinions. I'm Gina Barrier, and I live in Hudson, but I'm representing the property at 815 Virginia Street, Southwest Lenore. So my former husband, Don Barrier, owned the property next to Google on Virginia Street. It was a biodiesel manufacturing facility. Well, he passed away last year, and the property went to our son, Joshua, who's trying to sell it in order to settle the estate. So I'm speaking on his behalf and that of Don's sister Dorothy, who is the executor of the will. So she has a vested interest in the property as well. And neither of them, by the way, received a letter. We found out about the closure from our neighbors on Virginia Street. So we would like to oppose the closure of Virginia Street because it would hinder our ability to access the property, as you've heard already, but also to potentially sell the property, and it could pose an emergency response situation. So we normally access the property from the Southwest Loop, not Highway 18. And we could drive all the way around if necessary. That's just an inconvenience for us. Doesn't affect, you know, a lot of people in the county. But if that intersection of Highway 18 and Virginia Street is blocked due to a wreck, an emergency, construction, or a problem with that old bridge, I know it's in good shape, but it is, I've been told, like 80 years old, we couldn't get into or out of the property. We would also like to sell that property. We need to in order to settle the estate. And we'd like to sell it to another manufacturer who can turn it into a thriving business. We have spoken to another biodiesel business, and they were interested. The problem is, if Virginia Street is closed, and there's one way in and one way out of a biodiesel manufacturing facility, that doesn't seem very safe in an emergency. As I said before, if that intersection is blocked, or if they plan to use our driveway at 815 Virginia Street as a cul-de-sac, and there's an accident in front of our driveway, we would either be blocked in or couldn't get in there in case of an emergency. And personally, if I'm blocked in there, I really don't want to try crossing Lower Creek on foot and climbing up that hill to Highway 18. So I would think that the city would need to reconsider its emergency response plans to account for any situation such as a potential fire that may arise, or be willing to provide a second entrance to the property. I know there was a list of other properties that had one entrance in, one entrance out, but none of them contain large amounts of hazardous or flammable material like biodiesel. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next is Mr. J.R.
Thank you, Mr. Council, Commissioners, Mayor Gibbons. I appreciate being here tonight. And I just want to say that I'm not contradicting anything that the people from Google said. Not one thing. I just want to know why we have to close Virginia Street. Because I've used that road for 60-some years, every day of my life, and I just don't understand it. You know, I pay my taxes. I pay my taxes every year. And it seems to me that we could leave it open. And maybe just like build a bridge across it. That's a good idea. But, you know, when I'm standing here tonight, and I know one thing, that the people here that want Virginia Street left open are at the mercies of the council. We plead for mercy. That's all we can do. And that's all I have to say. And like I said, nothing against none of these fine folks that spoke for Googles, and I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Shirley Daniels, 1011 Emerald Place. I live on the corner, right before you get onto the Northwest Boulevard, or Southwest Boulevard. And this is going to give us more traffic past our house. And back in 2019, a truck hit our house because they didn't get around the corner. We have people coming around that corner and taking mailboxes out. And I approached the state because it's a state road, I think, but about guardrails, about putting something up because of the noise and everything and the traffic there. They finally put up a sign, 20 mile an hour sign, that's all. But we're going to get more traffic past our place, Emerald Place, Southwest. So I don't know what you considered, if you, you know, considered that on your findings or anything like that. But some of the people are from Emerald Place, and we need some answers. And, you know, we want to know what's really going to go on. So I don't know if you did any research on that side of Virginia Street?
Look into that. Thank you.
Because it's right before you get on to the Southwest Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, and good evening.
Good evening.
And thank you for hearing me. I live in the same place Shirley does. The lady just got in front of me. I live on 1007 Emerald Place. I do think that that would be too much traffic for Emerald Place because, like she said when she got hit by that truck, it took her, I mean, it took the whole corner of her house out. And when you have a lot of traffic coming down there to get back on 18, that's going to be a whole lot of traffic. It's going to be like being on 540 when the other traffic is going toward Lenore. So I just hope that you have some kind of situation or some kind of, something that you can come up with to help us, to help Dula Town, to help everybody that's on this end, to have to come toward town. That was an easy access for everybody to just go straight through and go about their business. I just hope that you would think about and us. And just remember, when you do consider everything, just think about us because we've been living out there for a long time, and we just really want the right thing to be done. We're not against Google. I'm for it. I'm for the jobs. I'm for the community. But we also need to think about these people. We also need to do that.
Next is Robert and Tasha Caldwell.
I'm so used to putting both our names down with Go places. I actually didn't even know what I was signing up for, but I'm glad I did, you know? But I actually remember the night whenever that lady's house got hit, me and my wife came by there that night when she got hit. But thank you for letting me speak just for a minute.
Where do you live, sir?
What's that?
Where do you live?
I live in Dula Town on 2392 Baptist Church Road in Lenore. And the closing of that road will, to me, be a disaster, you know? And I'm like the other gentleman here that I don't see why Google cannot build a bridge across to get access to their property when on the other property they got, they did build a bridge on it so they can get from point A to point B because they got a big old area in the middle of it. So I don't see why they can't build a bridge to get across. And another thing that concerns me, too, is like the, on Fairview, and like everybody's talking about the intersection, the intersection is terrible there. It is a bad spot. But also, like the speed limit that goes down through there and the road itself, you know, the cops and stuff is already sitting around all the time in Dula Town trying to pass out tickets constantly. And it's just a steady, constant thing all the time in Dula Town. And speed limit 25 mile an hour on Fairview going down through there. And it is, to me, is too low. But also, the red light there is terrible. You know, they do need to fix that red light. Like they say, you sit there two or three times just to get through that red light there. And on the other side, where the other lady's talking about, when you go down by the, on the other side for Fairview down through there, a lot of traffic would be going down through there. And that road is awful narrow and awful crazy on how people can get down through there safely, especially if trucks got to get down through it like Presswood's talking about. So y'all need to consider all the other little things that goes along with it, other than just making Google happy. But I'm pretty sure that, like the other man said, too, that it's a done deal regardless, no matter what we got to say. Because as long as Google pass out money to the city and keep y'all pockets full, y'all don't care what we got to go through. So I don't understand, you know, it's, you know, Google's got the monies. They need to build their own access to their property and leave us out of it. Let us keep our road, you know, because they got the cash to do it. Like they say, $650,000, y'all like it ain't nothing, so what the heck? You know, what's the problem building a $100,000 bridge across our form? You know? So thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, and it's Arnetta Dula.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. And classmates, been a long time. I actually live at 1954 10th Street Place, Northwest in Hickory, North Carolina. And I'm here because I'm a longstanding native of Lenore, grew up here. My father, Arnold Dula, was a police officer here. My mother, who is in her 90s, still lives in the Dula Town community as well as other relatives. I think most of the reasons that I was going to put forth have already been stated, but in honor of my mother and in memory of my father, I would like to reiterate that it's changes hard, especially when you're in your 90s. That's going to be a very difficult change. And I know the statutory, you don't have to state why. The road is being closed. The applicant doesn't necessarily have to state why, but it would go a long way in helping ease the minds of people, including my mind. Also, the changing traffic patterns has already been stated, that Virginia Street is the primary route into the Dula Town community, and it will force longstanding residents to get accustomed to a new traffic pattern. And many of those residents are seniors. That is an aging community. And change is very difficult when you're young, but especially as you get older. And I'm in that population. I carry my AARP card very proudly. It's very difficult to get used to that traffic pattern. Forcing people to go onto Fairview, you might as well park an extra police car there because it is only 20 miles per hour, and you're going to get a lot of speeders on that route. And that intersection is horrendous. I remember even as a young driver, trying to get adjusted to that and almost having to get out into the road in order to be able to see to make a right turn or even a left turn. So that needs to be accommodated. And then I think it was mentioned that traffic circles. I don't know about anyone else here, but I hate traffic circles. Okay, take the third exit, okay? Is the first one I enter to, is that number one or is that zero? So traffic circles can be confusing even for the most savvy drivers. But for drivers, again, who may be older, that's going to be utterly confusing. I think it's going to lead to accidents. And also, I didn't hear specifics on, many specifics on the response time. I heard that the emergency personnel said it wouldn't affect their time. But I would like to know, what are the specific times? How much is it going to increase the response time? I think a gentleman stated a minute is a lifetime. It is, especially if you're having a heart attack or a stroke or some other medical emergency. A minute can be, mean a lifetime or something totally different. But those are my reasons. I certainly appreciate your time, and again, respect to you. I am not against progress either. I believe Lenore should grow. I want Caldwell County to grow. This is my home. I consider it still to be my home, and I want it to grow. But the good of many at the expense of a few, I can't see that. So again, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Andrew, and I'm not sure, I can't read, Harrell, maybe?
That's my left-handed scrawl.
Oh, okay. That's okay.
Good afternoon, Council. My name's Andy Howell. I'm sorry I put Andrew on there for you and couldn't spell it right. I'm an attorney from Hickory, North Carolina. I'm with the law firm of Sigmund Clark Mackey, Hanvey &amp; Farrell, and I represent Mac Tech Properties and Big Bear Paul LLC, who are the two property owners that were identified on the map put up by the planner. In the red area that's right near- It's a machine manufacturing facility, they do service fabrication, they go to other places, including pharmaceutical companies who are their primary clients. They head out to those pharmaceutical companies to provide machine work, do machines, service machines. Simply put, in my country boy way of speaking, I grew up in Burnsville, North Carolina, they work with a lot of large things and they do a lot of work that's very dangerous, including the lifting of these machines within their facility. Also, they have all sorts of safety equipment within their facility, including eye wash places, eye wash stations for their employees, because it's dangerous work. They have a plasma cutting machine, for example, hot molten liquid metal that they're working with at their property. I've got maps, I'll be happy to put it into the record, I have eight exhibits here, I come prepared for court, I know Mr. Rohr and Mr. Lackey are happy to see me get put on a shot clock. So, I've got to shut up, and Ms. Dula too, she's used to it too. But, I've come with these exhibits, I'm happy to tender them into the record, they're maps, they're also photographs from my client's property showing the machines, the work that they do, and showing how they access their property. Currently, they're able to access their property from both sides of Virginia Street. They've got large 53-foot trucks and trailers that come on and off their property. And like everybody else up here said, and I've had the opportunity to sit and listen to, these folks are against progress, Sesser family that operate these businesses that are sitting with me here. They're pro-Google, they like Google, but, what they can abide and what they can't have at this point, is having a street closure put upon them that's going to limit them to one access point over a bridge, over Lower Creek. You've heard from these other folks that have talked about what happens in emergency situations. The reason I bring up what they do at their facility, is if they have a fire, if they have a seriously injured employee, they, certainly what they do could result in death, they have a perfect safety record right now, but things happen, and something happens at that bridge, be it a car crash, be it anything that blocks that bridge, they're going to have a huge problem. And the question for you all to consider under the statute as I see it, is whether these folks have reasonable access, as it's left, if this closure goes through. And I would argue to you that not knowing those things is not reasonable at this point. These folks have a duty to protect their folks that work for them, protect their employees, and protect their property, and that's being lost here. I think from what I've heard from everybody here, Google, as I know it, loves information, they're able to communicate, they're a communications company, but there's been a total lack of communication, at least with my folks and the folks in this community, about what is going on, and I know, as Ms. Dula said, there doesn't have to be a given purpose for why this road closure is taking place, but all we know, and all we can see right now, is the street is being closed. Tapah Dynamics, which is a holding company for Google, is taking it over, taking over that property where the street once lied, the purple that was on the map. And that's all that these folks know about it. We don't know why, we don't, if it's for the purposes of security, put up a gate and put up a fence. Talk with these folks. That's what they want. So, in closing, I've already ran over my shot clock, I see TJ looking at me. In closing, what I would suggest to you, and I know that I'm not able to do this, and I come here with exhibits, and I'm wanting to examine witnesses, put on testimony like I'm in court, and cross-examine folks about it. What I would suggest to you, if you have any question about this, is you have the power and authority to set an evidentiary hearing about this, and I would request it. I would also put into the record these exhibits that I have, I'll be happy to tender them at the appropriate time, put them in before you all, so you can take a look at it, and I've got witnesses, I've got a truck driver named Coy Bowman that worked at Bernhardt for years that's seen this bridge closed, seen it closed down due to flooding, because part of this property's in a flood plain, seen it closed due to crashes. And the only reason I want him to say that, I don't have to now because I've tendered it through what I've said, is if that bridge goes down for these folks, they've got a significant liability on their hands. They've got a problem with their property value, and they've got a problem with the safety of their employees. So, that's all I have to say. And I appreciate y'all standing up.
Thank you, sir. Next, Mr. Mitchell Sesser.
Hello, my name is Mitchell Sesser, thank you for hearing me today. There's not really much more I can say than that my lawyer's already said here, but I did want to add a couple things, just a little history. In 1953, my grandfather opened a company called City Machine Company. I'm sure many of you have heard of it and have known of it, and it was in the community for years and years. So, for 71 years, my family has serviced the community and local businesses, providing machine work, welding, fabrication services, and many other, we've helped the community in many ways. We're not opposed to Google, okay? The only reason I can see that they would want to close the road, was so they can have a contiguous campus from the north side to the south side. That is it. The only thing that they have to do, if you leave the road open, is add one fence and one gate and leave the road open. It doesn't hurt them at all, but it hurts the community and the businesses that this is attached to. If you look at what happened at Fairview, Fairview Bridge was just rebuilt, if I'm correct, last year. It took them six months to rebuild that bridge. If our bridge goes out, I don't care if it's in good condition, now you don't know what's going to happen tomorrow. Bridges are perishable items, they will, eventually that bridge will have to go. So, as a council, are you telling me that my business has, it's on a stopwatch, or it's the time's counting down on it? It's only viable until the bridge does go down under maintenance? Because when the bridge goes out, my business is not going to survive for six months being down, with me having no access to my property. But, then again, I do want to iterate, I'm not anti-Google. We are trying to economically develop our company to provide more jobs as well. So, I really think that there are solutions to the problem, but there are no solutions to the problems that have been proposed to you today. So, I would say vote this down and show the community and the small business owners like me, that we're just as important as Google. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is Rita Hubbard.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak. I'm coming in as the owner of the property at 1101 Virginia, which is the intersection that everyone's talking about being dangerous. What I'm asking for the council to do, is to put this on hold, until you figure out a solution to that very dangerous intersection. It is going to put a hardship on the citizens of Dula Town and on the businesses, but more than that, when there's an accident at that intersection, you're going to be putting stress on your emergency systems, and there's not going to be a comeback from that, when someone is killed at that intersection. But, take time to look at that and figure out the intersection before you close Virginia That's all that I've got to say, I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you very much. And the last one we have on our sign-up list is Mr. Ralph Dula.
Hello, to everybody. All I can say, I guess this is going to affect me a whole lot, I'm on the corner, you know, it's going to affect me, my business and everything. And like I say, all I can say, I just have to take the bad with the good and go with it. You know, I'm small business, I'm just trying to make it like everybody else, but I guess I can come to y'all if I can't, if I don't have a revenue to make it, point me in the direction to get some assistance, so I can keep my business up, and just keep it, you know, keep it going. Because like I say, I'm working by myself, I don't have no people working, you know, in there. You know, I don't get boot friend or nothing, it's just me, what goes in have to go out. But, now it's going to be less coming in, and, you know, so, all I can do is just say, I just have to give it to God and just go on with it. You know, if I gotta, if I gotta take on less and Google gotta take on more, it's just the way it is, I mean, I can't do nothing about it, you know, I just have to go through life with it, you know, but, so, all I got to say is, y'all just pray, y'all just pray for me, I just don't want my business to go under, y'all just pray for me, I just need prayer right now. That's all, well, thank you.
Thank you, sir. As I stated, that was the last one that was signed up, but if there's anyone else that didn't get a chance to sign up, who would like to address the council, we would be for you open for that now. This is a public hearing. If you'd like to. Yes, sir? If you will come up and give us your name and address.
Thank you for letting me speak. Andy asked me to come up here, I'm just a truck driver. I live in Bethlehem, I work for a company named Anchor Richie EBS, we build fire trucks, we repair fire trucks.
What was your name again, sir?
I'm sorry, my name's Coy Bowman.
Coy Bowman.
Yes, sir. I'm not good at this, I'm kind of nervous, okay? This town raised me. I don't know many of these people, I know a few. I remember Mr. Dula. I was born across the street in Blackweller Hospital. It's gone, lots of things are gone. I don't come here much anymore. Seeing a lot of these people breaks my heart really bad. I used to think I was really tough, and now I kind of wish I maybe hadn't have come. Virginia Street, for a lot of these people, in Dula Town especially, they need that street. These people, Google, are good people, I'm sure. I don't have any animosity toward them, I'm happy that they do good, I'm happy that they help the community. But, my whole life, I grew up pretty poor, but I'm very blessed. I worked for a man named Ed Newton at Newton Transportation, some of you may know him, some of you may not. I also worked for a gentleman named A.P. Anderson, and Colwell Freight Lines, and I also worked for Broihill Transportation. Like I said, my whole, I've never been nothing but a truck driver, I don't have lots of education, but, it gave me a job. I am more like these people than anybody here. The one thing that those people taught me, and they were a big part of this community, if any of you remember, if you can't help your neighbor, you don't do nothing to make it hard on them. You don't do nothing to make it hard on them. I really appreciate, I appreciate you giving me this opportunity. It will make no difference to me how you vote, you can do whatever, it will make no difference to me, but it will hurt a lot of these people. Google could spend enough money, like some of these people said, to put them a bridge across there, they'd never know, they wouldn't even know they spent it. They wouldn't even know they spent it. So, with that, all I'm going to say is, if you can't help your neighbor, whatever you do, do not do something to hurt them. With that said, I really appreciate y'all, I appreciate this community for the years I did live here, I appreciate the opportunities I had to work here so I could make a living, and I wish all of you nothing but the best, and I hope God will always bless you and everybody here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to address the, yes, sir?
My name is Randy Roper, I live at 1075 Abington Road, here in Colwell County. Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, appreciate you letting me speak. I had no intention of saying anything tonight, I came here in support of my extended family, which they have a business on Virginia Street. But, I've listened to a lot of what these people are saying, and as most of you well know, in the past, I've worked in some issues with the county and worked with people and tried to make decisions that was to the benefit of the people, to the benefit of the county, to the best of my ability. Sometimes I did not know all the ramifications of the decisions that I was making. And from what I'm hearing tonight, I'm not sure that this council has all those ramifications either. I know that, I know that you're very educated and you've looked at this, but you're affecting a lot of people, it's easy to make a decision and sweep them under the rug, so to speak, because maybe they don't matter too much. But, now I think you need to take a second look at it. And all I want to do is say, I challenge you, and I challenge Google, to come up with a solution that would benefit both them and the people involved. If Google can conquer the world, as they've done in such a short period of time, they can figure out a solution to this problem. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am, come on up.
Hi, Paulette McCorkle, I live at 1770 Dula Town Road.
What was your name?
Paulette McCorkle.
Thank you.
Yes. Google has done great things, I was sitting and listening to all the things that they do in the community that I wasn't even aware of. However, I do live in the Dula Town area, and I feel like closing Virginia Street would be a hardship for the community. Coming off of Fairview, not even two weeks ago, someone making a right turn, almost hit me head-on. Very dangerous intersection. As a former truck driver, I understand what it would be like for truck drivers on that, having to come up that road to make the turn. On Fairview, we always have police sitting there clocking, if you go over 25, bam, they're on you. But, we can consider closing a road for Google because they bring so much to the community, but, the people who live in the community, that continuously beg for police support to do something with the drug deals, we can't get that done, but we can get a road closed? That's a problem. That's a problem. And I feel like Google can work something else out, like they've said previously, they can build a bridge, but, consider us as well. You know, we've considered everything that they've wanted, but take the time and consider that we live there, and even with us living there, at night, you have to have some kind of noise going, because you hear Google noise, Google talking all night long. So, we are improvising also, so we're asking that someone make some provision for us.
Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing, and I will turn it over to city council for any action, discussion?
A couple of topics of discussion or clarification that I might can get from staff. I've made a lot of notes. Scott, we've heard about the road width of the roads in question, Fairview, Emerald Place, are those roads consistent with our standard right-of-way and road width in those areas? Are they smaller, narrower? Can you educate us on that?
To my knowledge, they are, meet our standards, but I've got staff here that probably know more about roads than I do. But I've got staff here that probably know more about roads than I do. So I don't know if...
It might be helpful to have Hannah come up here because I think we're going to have some questions.
Is Mr. Hogan here?
John's here.
John?
Engineers back there as well, I think. So they may can go back and answer questions.
And while John and Hannah, you know, the intersection of Fairview has come up, so I'd like to hear some feedback on the study that was done about the, about the intersection there at Fairview, please.
John Hogan is our Public Works Director.
Yeah, John Hogan, Public Works Director. So first of all, I'm not a traffic engineer, so state that. But yes, so our road widths there, we have 22-foot roads and 20-foot roadways. Those widths are conducive to the speeds set on those roads. Those are, follow those are design standards. That is part of federal highways, NCDOT. And so our roads are designed to meet those standards. But a further traffic study in the future would be warranted with the closure to make sure those roads are suitable for that volume.
Thank you. Yes, specifically about the intersection there at Fairview Road, if you've got any information about the study?
I don't have any particular information about the safety of Fairview Drive right there. But I will say, future traffic impacts from the closure, we don't know where there might need to be more safety treatments yet because we don't know where the traffic will go. But certainly, wherever there is a demonstrated need, we, and the location of a demonstrated need is determined, we can figure out how to do safety improvements for visibility, width, and that kind of thing. And that can be determined...
Excuse me, let her speak, please.
That can be determined by the trip counts and just where that displaced traffic ends up going, if it is to Fairview Drive, if it is to Southwest Boulevard. And I just wanted to review the traffic demand model, or the travel demand model from the MPO. We're talking about 2,000 trips. And 2,000 trips isn't 2,000 drivers. It's just, it's going and coming. That's how trips are counted. And I wanted to also state that on Southwest Boulevard, between Virginia Street and the 18 intersection, the annual average trip count for, from NCDOT, the 2023 numbers, that is for 14,000. So that's just another statistic for you to consider when you make your decision. Also, just to address some other concerns, Tapaha Dynamics is looking to unite their campus for operational and security purposes. That's the primary reason for them to propose this closure. And the statement that I received from the Lenore Fire Chief stated that the service area for Station One and the service area for Station Two meet at Virginia Street and Fairview Drive. And he said it would be very simple to adjust their routes so that Station One ends at the northern terminus that's been proposed and that the Station Two can accommodate the southern terminus. So he did not anticipate any impact at all to the service that those stations provide. And that is about everything that I had written down so far. But if you have any other particular questions about traffic, I can look into it.
Just one item on traffic, there was comments about the left turn onto the loop, which that's DOT issue. We would have to request them to do that study, but I'd like to see us do that, to see if they can change the sequencing of that line.
Definitely. Absolutely. Absolutely, we can request the division, take a look, a strong look at these intersections wherever we anticipate more traffic.
But I understand what you're saying. We don't know where the traffic's going to go, which exact route to get the counts yet.
Which is also why a traffic impact analysis would not necessarily be handy at this point because we don't know where that future displaced traffic might go.
I think that's all I had right now.
Okay.
Okay. Counsel, anyone?
Mr. Mayor, a couple of things. The change, once, if the road is closed, that will trigger changes in traffic. That is when the traffic study numbers and data would actually tell us how to amend the... Yes, thank you. So if the road is closed by vote tonight, when the road closes, the traffic changes, and that's when we need to study the road width, the sightlines, the change...
Please, please let us, let us speak.
And so the detailed information that we would need to make good decisions about the intersection at Fairview and Virginia Street, to make that intersection as safe as possible, that data will come from that traffic study.
Yeah, a traffic study is, yeah, is one way to figure out how to improve safety for those intersections, yes.
Can you, are there other tools that we have?
I believe you could, I'm not a transportation planner, I'm sorry. I do, I do have access to resources of NCDOT and our MPO. But, so to my knowledge, that is a way to study the safety. Yeah, I'm sorry, that's not the best complete answer for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions of any comments?
Mine was similar about the traffic pattern, the left turn, Fairview, that will be determined.
I think we're on agreement that we do know there's some intersection. We need to look at that and how the streets are flowing through there. So those are things that we will need to talk about and study, for sure. Any other comments?
Nothing here.
I'll entertain then a motion concerning this.
Can I ask another question?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
If the council votes to close the segment of Virginia Street, we vote that tonight, what is the timing of the actual closing of the road? Is that tomorrow? Is that next year? Is, do we have a timeline on this?
First, Mr. Hildebrandt.
I'm not aware of a date certain. It's not immediate. My understanding would be after the first of the year, once they go back and get involved with the, I don't think they have a building design totally yet on where it's going, the final locations. They're starting preliminary grading out there, but I don't think they have any decision made yet. But my understanding, and I don't want to hear from Tapahas here, but my understanding is not anything immediate.
Okay, so it's not an immediate closure based on tonight's vote. And so we do have time to study the width of those roads and look at the amendments that might be warranted to give our residents safety and a feeling of confidence and security in the system, that we are hearing their voices and hearing their concerns so that going forward, we make good decisions for the residents of that neighborhood.
Well, I will allow it. We've closed the public hearing, but I will let you stay it. Please approach the microphone. Yeah, please. Yes.
They're recording it, that's the reason.
Okay, that'll work. If y'all happen to ride to Dula Town, if y'all take time right there where D and D Miller Grocery Store used to be, when you go by that, by that grocery store going to Dula Town, right there where the, there's apartments up on the hill? At that area right there, there's no way possible for two tractor and trailers to pass at that point. No way possible. Because if you're coming that way, you have to stop in order for a tractor and trailer to come by. And plus, right there on that little edge right there, there is a drop-off where you go off into Lady's Driveway, and there is no way to widen that area, not unless you actually purchase it or talk to them, put them a new road in or whatever. So there's no way possible for two tractor and trailers to pass at that point. So that is, and there's a light pole right there in the way, too, so you can't get over. So either hit the truck or hit the light pole, whichever way you want. You know, so that's something else to think about, too.
Thank you, sir.
So that is something to look at the road.
We appreciate that. Okay. Anything else, folks in the council? Entertain a motion concerning this.
Well, Mr. Mayor, first, I'd like to say, I appreciate the staff, city, county, with the reports and the details we've been given. And I also really appreciate the residents that have come out to voice their concerns because the way we communicate in a democracy is we talk to each other, and we appreciate you coming. I would like to say that I think this is a great example of how the details of a project sometimes are so enormous, it's hard to wrap your head around all the details. And as residents, you see your street every day. And then, you know, as city services, county and city, we, we see our services based on some actual foot, feet on the ground. And sometimes it's, you know, through reports and detailed things like that. I would like to say that the change of traffic pattern, I realize is an inconvenience, for sure. And then there are some safety concerns on the part of the residents and the business owners. And if council approves the closure of this segment of the road, I will give you my word, I cannot speak for the entire council, but I'll give you my word, that your comments will not be forgotten. And as I look out here, I've got an old basketball coach sitting there. I've got parents of children that I taught, parents that I know, and community members, and folks that I taught, and community members who care about their neighborhood, and you care about your safety. And I will tell you that I personally, and I think I can speak for the entire council on this, your safety is of utmost importance to us on a daily basis, not just in this decision. Our, talking with the Fire Department and having their report that Station One and Station Two would now serve two different ends of Virginia Street, and it will not affect the timing of their response because Station Two comes out of Whittenell, comes straight down that loop. And Station One comes from here, of course. And having ridden with the Fire Department, I'll tell you one thing, as soon as they hit that truck, they're at your house. And they hear that bell, and they're out in less than 60 seconds. And the City of Lenore responds to every fire and medical call. Typically, in the city limits, we're there before EMS, typically, not every time.
Around three minutes.
Yeah, we have a three-minute response time. And I will be looking, I'll be looking at those reports because we get them on a quarterly basis. Because I am concerned about your safety and your health. And please never doubt that. The safety of the Fairview and Virginia intersection, I rode through there twice this summer, out and back, going to Dula Town Presbyterian for Bible study. And you're right, there's some, it's kind of an odd intersection. Now, if you don't travel that way every day, you don't see it like, like you will, because you see it every day. It is, it is your neighborhood, and it's very personal. And so we hear how personal that is to you, and we take that to heart. We will not forget the comments about safety on this traffic. We will not forget that. And the traffic study, or whatever engineering studies we have to do to make your neighborhood safe in the event that this does vote to close that segment of the road, you will not be forgotten by this council.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Because we care about every neighborhood in this town. We care about every resident in this town, and we care about the business owners. Now, there are times where things, progress does have its pain. And I know as, growing up in a, in a neighborhood that had single access, and living in a neighborhood now that has single access, I realized there are times where that road could get closed for an accident. Or the neighborhood I grew up in, I remember the water coming over the bridge, and we were stuck in there for a few hours until that water receded. But that bridge never failed. And the engineering studies that we've had on this and the presentation we've had is that that, that bridge is, the current Virginia Street Bridge is 99.55% in good condition. It's not going to get better than that. I mean, it just won't. We also have, if part of this agreement, Google, sorry, Project Cardinal. Try to keep this, keep this on the right side. Jesus. They have approved, they have agreed to grant access in the event of an emergency or that bridge becomes impassable.
But are they going to give me access to my business if it goes down for the eight months that they're rebuilding it? Huh? An emergency is not the only thing. If that bridge goes down, my business is done. Done! Are you telling me my business, it has an expiration date?
We are, we're not telling you that, sir.
We're not. We, we don't want to, we don't want any business or resident to lose access to their property. That is never the intent of government, or city government. We don't want you to lose access to your property. The, the engineering studies on that bridge tell us that the likelihood of it failing or becoming impassable is nearly zero. Now, could there be a car accident? Sure, there could be. That could happen anywhere in town, any neighborhood in town. But that's not going to cut off the access permanently. It would just, it'd be just like if you had an accident, an accident right at your neighborhood entrance. You're going to be inconvenienced for a few minutes. That, that is going to happen. There are a lot of concerns here. And again, please know, we hear you. And we are not going to, if this segment of the road gets closed, we are not going to stop working to make sure that you have safe streets and safe access to your neighborhoods and businesses.
Okay. Again, any other comments from council? If not, I'll entertain a motion of some sort.
Well, Mr. Mayor, after all the, the evidence that's been presented to us and the, the comments that, that we have heard that we, we take to heart, this project adds so much to our local economy and to our tax base. And we are, we are fortunate to have this big of an investment in the City of Lenore and the County of Caldwell that I will make a motion that we vote to close the segment of Virginia Street as presented, knowing that we still have work to do, that we owe our due diligence to the residents and the businesses here, that we don't just close this segment and forget about it. That we close this segment and we make sure that we secure the safety of all these residents on Fairview Drive and that intersection at Fairview and Virginia.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
And as an amendment to that motion, to adopt the findings of fact presented by staff. staff.
Thank you, sir. I have a motion from Councilmember Beal that we proceed with the closing of the portion of Virginia Street as presented and include into that the facts that were presented tonight from the city staff as on that. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That carries unanimously.
Of course.
Appreciate that.
Please, we have some other business to take care of, if you don't mind. Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda is the Water Purchase and Allegation Agreement. This is number two. Give it a few seconds here.
Yeah, let's do it. You're good, John. Key is addressing those issues. That's, our key is addressing those issues, and that's what they're, we're here for.
Especially like talking to people.
We got it, we got to let them know, we're here, and we, and those legitimate concerns. And we have time, we have time to address them. I wrote them down too.
[inaudible]
Huh? I'm doing right, you're doing right. If you don't, I'm okay. I'm okay with it. They'll get used to it. You do, they get used to it. But the scenario of Virginia Street, we can't turn that, that area, they're talking about it. They got houses on both sides. You can't move them houses. That ain't moving, we're closing them. They're just talking about the area before you get to the loop or Fairview. You can't do that.
Yeah, we still have a meeting to want.
Yes. Please, thank you. We've got a meeting to continue. We'd appreciate it. You being here with us, thank you very much. As we will, we'd like to continue. Thank you. Okay, next item is Water Purchase and Allegation Agreement Number Two with Tapahah Dynamics LLC. Our staff is recommending approval of the proposed Water Purchase and Allegation Agreement Number Two between the city of Lenore and Tapahah Dynamics LLC to ensure water flow availability, availability to meet current and future needs at the Tapahah campus as submitted. I will first, I will entertain, talk the city manager, Mr. Hildebrand, with the purchase agreement.
Mayor Gibbons, counsel. As you're aware, we currently have a water purchase and allocation agreement that was done in 2017 that outlines the duties and obligations regarding water and sewer surfaces on their property. With the proposed expansion of the campus to the west, Tapahah requests additional water flow availability to meet their current and future demands for a term of 25 years. The city does have adequate water supply to serve the project. Tapahah has voluntarily agreed to contribute $6.88 million to the city to ensure this flow that meets their current and future needs during this agreement. They also, I would note, they pay the prevailing water and sewer bulk rate as other customers do, and they also go back and follow all of our rules, regulations, ordinances as other customers do. With that, we have here tonight, I know Joel Whitford with McGill Associates is here, Rafford Thomas, former Public Utilities Director is here, who's been involved for a number of years, and then Dr. Jeff Church is here. So if you have questions about the agreement, any of us can try to answer those. But otherwise, it's similar to the one you have in 2017, just been amended and updated with a new volume request.
Okay, you heard the statements from our city manager. If you have any questions of any of our staff or Mr. Whitford here, I'll open it up to council for any discussion and/or motion for it, please.
Mr. Mayor, considering our history with them for the last 15 years, and this, this agreement is essentially in accordance with our other agreement, I make a motion that we accept the new water purchase and allocation agreement.
Thank you, sir. I have a motion from Mayor Protem Stevens that we approve the consideration and action on the water purchase and allegation agreement for Project Cardinal as presented. No other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on then to project identification. And Mark Tranceu, Caldwell County EDACT Board Vice Chair and Lenore Business Advisor Board Chair, we welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now that both the county and the city have taken action regarding the incentive agreements associated with Project Cardinal, we can now officially link Project Cardinal with Google. So going forward, the county and city will continue their discussions with Google regarding the potential expansion of Google's data center here. As was noted earlier, this is the largest, it represents the largest economic development project in the history of the county. So we look forward to Google's continued expansion and investment in our community. And so this time, I turn it back over to the boards.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tranceu. And we, again, appreciate everybody's involvement in being here this evening, and certainly are looking forward to this longstanding partnership with Google and, and all that comes with that. So we appreciate you folks for being here. Ashley, you and your team and all the work that's gone into this. A lot of people don't realize, I know the mayor and a couple of us have been on a board, we probably started talking about some of these things 10, 11, 12 years ago.
It's about that.
And it's been a long time coming to get to this point. And so we're very pleased to be able to do that this evening. So with that, any of the other commissioners have anything you want to say? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So we are adjourned from the Caldwell County Board of Commissioners.
And I will do the same for the Lenore City Council. Thank you again for your work on this. I know this is a difficult thing, but we're really proud to have this partnership with Google, as we can say now officially. It's been a good one up to this point, and we want to continue that and keep moving forward. Thank you for working with us. Thank you, staff, for all the work you put in. I know, Scott, especially your phone has been ringing for months and years, and it's been a lot of work back and forth. Thank you, all of our staff and everyone for being involved in this and putting everything that you heard tonight together, difficult as it is to, to do some of these things, we, we try to do what's best. You know, we always believe we've got to do what's the best for the most people of our community, our county, and that's what we all, commission and city council try to do, and we work toward that every day. So we'll do our best. So anyway, there's nothing else to come before us tonight. We'll stand adjourned as Lenore City Council. Thank you for being with us.